Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Schei, Acting Mayor for the City of Vader. The time is 6:03 on January 23rd, 2020. Welcome to our regularly scheduled council meeting. Roll call.
Donna Rogers here. Jason Daley.
Here.
Joe Schei.
Here.
Mike Parsons. Mike Parsons. Samantha Lovelady here.
All right, all here. Quorum. Pledge your allegiance. All rise. Samantha, would you go on?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. So the codification documents that we've been waiting for showed up on Friday, two weeks ago. So we have the book here in City Hall. Before we can put it online and use it officially, we'll need to adopt it with an ordinance. So there did provide a sample ordinance, but there are some odd things in there that are probably not relevant to the City of Vader. So we're going to need to get that looked at and then have that available for council confirmation here in the near future. An announcement, there's going to be a public town hall meeting at the Olaquas Senior Center in Winlock on January 31st at 12:30 to 1:30 for the community input for Lewis County strategic planning. So that's both Winlock and Vader invited for this county planning meeting, and they want everyone's input. So please attend if you can. I know it's the middle of the day, but that's when they scheduled it. So far, we've received actually eight applications for our different positions for clerk and deputy clerk, four for each position. And as you can see, further on in the agenda, we have an option for you to nominate our new deputy clerk. And in the near future, this next week, we're going to start working on the clerk treasurer position and performing interviews for that. That's coming as well. Council reports.
Well, I have a report. I just want to report on the attorney fees that we spent in 2019 was $23,205. The local planning was $21,806. And our inspector Townsend, $2,543.68, but that was for, I think, 10 months. And so I would like to see more money spent on our infrastructure. We need a roof on the jail, a foundation and the chimney repaired. The canopy needs a roof. The bathrooms, I'm not sure about them or how they, what repair they're in. Our city shop needs some maintenance and our city hall possibly is in need of a roof. So I'd like to see some of these attorney fees go away and call MRC instead and maybe get an investment in our city for a change, because I haven't seen any of that in the last 30 years. So code infractions, I'm curious how many we've had and what are outstanding and what those fines are, what kind of return have we gotten off of those code enforcement fines? I don't heard, we don't have hardly anything in return, but thousands of dollars in attorney fees to do those. And our, I didn't see any ads in the paper for our personnel, for clerk, city clerk or any of the other. It was only, I believe, advertised on this site, our city site?
It was in the Lewis County News as well, for two weeks.
I didn't see it in the Lewis County News. I didn't see it in the Daily News or the Chronicle. Why was that?
We did not advertise in the Daily News and the Chronicle. They wanted $400 per week each to advertise the same article that we input into the Lewis County News.
Okay.
It appeared in the Help Wanted section.
Yeah, it was kind of small, but it was there.
Oh, okay. Well, okay, I guess that's about all I have to say right now.
Anyone else? Mike, any council comment?
I did want to report that the May Day Committee is putting on a contest for their buttons and their shirts, and it's starting now through, I'll give the information.
We need them by March.
By March, yes.
I was going to say no matter what.
And they can be turned in at the restaurant during the day as well. So it's been in the Lewis County News too about the contest, so I just wanted it out there that it's there and it's for everyone. So draw.
Be creative.
Draw, wild, wild, best.
Anything else? Agenda approval. I have a request on the agenda. I have a prepared statement. Council members, with the guidance that I received from the city attorney, I must request that Agenda Item Number Five regarding Scott Gross be removed from the agenda and no discussion on this issue take place at this time. Unfortunately, as of this morning, it's become clear that the city may be involved in some kind of legal liability with regards to this topic. Until the attorney fully understands the issues and provides further guidance, I must request that we table this discussion until a later time. I understand that a resolution and closing of this matter is desired by the members of the council and the citizens of this city. However, discussion and/or action taken by the council could put the city in further legal jeopardy. Please approve an amended agenda with this item removed.
Is that from the city attorney?
That is me and the city attorney. I did discuss this with the city attorney. And that is the legal guidance they have provided to us to protect the city.
From what? How about the citizens?
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda without the number five.
We have a motion on the table to approve the agenda, amended agenda with item number five removed. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Further discussion? No.
Well, I think it's pretty reprehensible, and I want to know what the city attorney had to say about not doing this.
And you will in a confidential setting.
Oh, well, it was pretty public what was said.
You will know later in a confidential setting.
What does that mean? Confidential setting?
That means if we discuss it further in detail now, it could put the city in further legal jeopardy, and it would be best if we do not discuss it now. To protect the city.
I'm sure. All right, whatever.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. I will be sure to speak with the council members in a confidential setting and inform you of the legal action that is of concern.
Then that should be an executive session, not one-on-one in private.
That could be arranged.
Then that's what should be done.
Minutes approval.
I'll get, I'll approve the minutes from the meeting from 1, 2019 as written.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve the council meetings as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Miss Lovelady. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the extended December 2019 in the amount of $21,082.06, ending December with $60,704.70, three cents in expenditures, and all of January 2020 in $63,506.77.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve the vouchers. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Miss Lovelady. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the vouchers for the extended period of December 2019 and all of January 2020, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes.
Mike's thought is very disruptive.
I was actually going to mention that.
It is.
Mike, can you put us on mute and then take us off mute when you're ready to talk?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, special reports. Ryan Green, Superintendent of Castle Rock School District.
Well, hello. Thank you for letting me come up today. We have two propositions on the ballot. We have a levy on the ballot, and we also have a bond on the ballot. I wanted to make sure that we came up here to pass out information, answer questions that you might have. It's a need for our school district. Hope they have enough confidence. In Castle Rock, this year, we've grown 136 kids from last June till now. Let me share a little bit.
136.
136 new kids.
Wow.
Our facilities are old. Actually, our facilities are old. We've been up here for the last two years talking about our facilities. They haven't got better in two years. We're in a situation where we have needs in our district. We added portables this year with that much growth. It's about six classrooms that we need to add every year to accommodate our growth, the high school, middle school, and elementary school. The bond is a large bond. It's for a new middle school at the high school campus, and it's for a redo of the upper level 3, 4, 5 building for the elementary school. The levy, as a replacement levy, as a Castle Rock Vader community, we pay about $1.67 taxes. When you look at the second sheet of paper, out of Calhoun and Lewis County, we're the lowest taxed school district. We have a tax rate of around $1.70. The next closest one to us is Green Mountain at $2.77. So we're a dollar less than anybody else around. When you look at some of the other districts, we're centered at 445, Elsas at 442, and again, we're at $1.68, $1.69. The reason that happened is 10 years ago, in 2010, our tax rate was $3.52. At that point, the recession hit, and our superintendent at that point decided that we weren't going to ask for another bond. So we went 10 years ago, 2010, we went from $3.52 to $1.70 right now. The hard part is we need to get back up there. Nobody wants to raise taxes, especially in the climate that we're in right now. It's really tough to raise taxes. I understand that going from $1.69 to $3.82 is a huge, huge ask, but the needs of the kids are there, and we need to have that. If you look at that, the new tax rate, just so you guys understand, when you look at the bonds, there's only two districts and two counties that aren't paying for bonds, us and Green Mountain. Every other school district in Calhoun County, Lewis County are paying for bonds and we're not. So when you add the bond into our taxes, the bond is $1.67 per thousand, stretched over 21 years, and that's to pay for those two major construction projects. The levy is going up a little bit. Our levy now is $1.49. It goes up to $1.98. And then we still have the capital projects levy, which is 17 cents, 18 cents, depending on the school year. So all that information is here. All the information's online. We have actually, if you go to our school district, there's actually a levy, bond levy 2020 page that has all the information, much, much more that you need to look at. There's PowerPoints, there's presentations, there's, we've had three open community forum nights that we've had people come in. Roughly about 140 people came in those three nights to talk to us about the bond and what we need. So I really encourage you guys to get the information that you need. I'll be here afterwards. I know that I have a limited amount of time to talk to you guys, but I just wanted to make sure that I gave you the information that we have. The second page, the back four, front and back one, that is what we use for all of our secretaries and teachers. It's kind of a cheat sheet for all the information that you need to know. So I printed that out for you guys, so you guys will have it. All the information's there. And then again, the flyer, if there's more information there, it's about what we're going to do to each building, what are the needs for each building. So with that, I really, again, appreciate you guys taking the time to hear us. We really want the support from Vader, and if you have any questions, I'll stay here until after the meeting, and we can have those questions. So is there any big questions I can answer? Yeah.
How many Vader students do you have?
It depends on when you look. Anywhere from 27% of the population of Vader goes to Castle Rock to about 35%. It depends on if you look at June or if you look at September. So about 40% of the kids in Vader go to Castle Rock.
Well, that'd be good, except I don't know how many kids we have in Vader. How many kids are going?
When the school was here 13 years ago, you had about 80 kids. So 40% of 80, you're looking at 35, 40 kids.
How many kids do we have in Vader today, in Castle Rock today? You don't even know.
No. It's 40%, but whether or not, I can give you a number. I mean, you're probably looking around less than 50.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah.
So last year, there was a bond, right?
Correct.
And it didn't pass?
Correct.
Has this been modified from that bond?
Yeah, so we dropped it considerably the amount. Last year's bond was, part of the high school was going to be remodeled. We went away from the high school. The reason why we went away from the high school is that right now, we have about 650 kids in the elementary school. If we grow at seven and a half percent, which we've done for the last two years, by the time the bond's done, voted for and built, we'll have about 800 kids at the elementary school. So we really felt the elementary school was more of a need than the high school. So we dropped the high school and added the elementary school. We're able to get more match money from the elementary school. So we lowered the overall tax burden for our community and added more match money. So out of the entire bond calculations, $34.7 million is coming from state, our local taxes, and then $15 million in match. So we're getting $50 million, but we only have to pay for $35 million from the local levies and our local bonds. So we decided to go a different route to lower that number. I think last year, I think we're at $42 million, $42.7 million for our bond, so we lowered that by $8 million, going with the elementary school instead.
Thank you.
Yeah. And again, I'll stay out there. If anybody asks questions, please feel free to talk to me afterwards. But again, thank you very much for allowing me to talk to you today.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
All right. City business. Council to consider, discuss options for appointment of mayor's position. Is the city council ready to make any nominations at this time? If you remember, we have 90 days from the resignation of Ms. Wilson, which was January 2nd, and so there is still time.
Well, maybe we could advertise more broadly until we have March, till March 30th. Might wait for a while and see if we get more applicants.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to that. Another two weeks won't kill us, or another few weeks.
Okay. Jason?
I know that we have two.
We do. We do have two people that are interested. We have letters.
I.
Letters from one of them, anyway.
I support one of those, Mr. Jocelyn. And just to throw that out there, I supported him so far in the rep for that.
Okay. Is that a nomination?
Well, it's, I'm just putting it out there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's considering.
Absolutely.
I do not mind waiting another couple of weeks. I also believe that Mr. Jocelyn's a great, great person for the position. He's been really good in the park board.
Okay. It's in there, right? Okay. Mr. Parsons, do you have an opinion?
I'm here to wait for a little while.
Hearing no nominations at this time, it will be tabled until the next meeting. Item number two, city business. Approve new planning committee member Mason Hall. Mason is here tonight. Mason?
Yes.
This is Mason Hall. Mason Hall expressed interest in being on the planning committee. Mason has quite the resume of items that would qualify him for the planning committee. And he attended the meeting, and he was well-received by the committee members, and they're looking forward to the council recommendation of him being on the planning committee. So if the council sees fit, we would need a motion, a second, and a nominee and a vote.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Mason Gall as the new member for our planning committee.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve Mason Gall to the planning committee. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Miss Lovelady. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. And he will need to be, he will be sworn in at the next planning committee meeting, then?
He's asking you.
I'm asking you. I'm pretty sure that's the way it works.
Is it at the next planning committee meeting or is it at the city council meeting? I feel like we did it at the council meetings. We did it at council meetings.
We will swear you in at the right time in the near future. I did not read ahead, I am sorry. Next item of business, item number three, approve new park board member Randy Hall. So Randy Hall, if you remember, Mr. Hall was on the city council for quite some time, and he's expressed interest to be on the park board. He's got a great track record, and he's going to continue his support of the city. Similar to before, we need a motion and a second and a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve Randy Hall for the new park board member.
Mr. Parsons has made a motion to approve Mr. Hall as a park board member. Do we have a second?
Unless I get that.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. Any discussion? All in favor of Mr. Hall being on the planning, or excuse me, the park board, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to Mr. Hall. I don't see him to, here tonight, but I met with him yesterday about this, and he expressed interest in it.
He would also be sworn in.
At the correct time. Don't have everything memorized for you.
I believe it was.
All right. Confirm mayor's recommendation for deputy clerk. So we did receive four resumes for deputy clerk, and we did conduct interviews with two of the most qualified individuals, myself, Mr. Daley, and Ms. Floyd, all sat in on an interview team. And we were unanimous in selecting Stephanie Montgomery to be our new deputy clerk. And you will see her offer letter in your packet. For our guidelines, similarly, the council needs a confirmatory vote.
Well, I was part of the selecting committee, and I really, I really believe that she's a really stand-behind person and will do the city very good. So I recommend Stephanie as the deputy clerk position.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to submit Stephanie, to approve Stephanie Montgomery as the new deputy clerk. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Miss Lovelady. Any discussion?
Does she live in Vader?
She does not live in Vader. She has moved out of town.
I'm sure.
She's moved out of town a while ago. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
That is in the city business. Public comment.
I have a question, sir.
Okay.
With the change of hands in the office here, are the days and the hours remaining the same?
They have not changed.
They're going to remain the same.
Okay, for public comment, we have Judy Costello.
My name is Judy Costello. I live at 709 8th Street, Vegas. Tonight, we're going to talk about garbage and rats. Everybody look at me. Let me get your attention here.
I don't like rats.
Okay, I don't like rats either.
They scare me.
And the Vader cats cannot keep up with the rats because they are getting so large. Now, there's been a lot of talk this week about our garbage ordinance. I'm sure a lot of you've seen it on Facebook, I've seen it, et cetera. We do have an ordinance, and we do have folks, and I can throw a rock and hit about five people from my house, they do not take the garbage service. And on the corner of B and 6, across from the church, we have eight garbage cans stacked three high. I have filled out two formal complaints, and I would like to know how we're going to stop the rats from running across the B Street alley. I would like all of you to jump right in there and help me figure this out. At the end of A and B Street, we have a rat infestation. These are huge, and it's because of household garbage. It is because of chicken poop and feed, which is a perfect habitat for this. So between the garbage, the hobby farms, and feeding, everybody, dog food, cat food, they'll eat anything.
I will tell you.
Oh, you're going to respond. I love it. And thank you very much for listening to me.
I will tell you that.
It was a pleasant conversation.
I will tell you that you should see a change before the next council meeting.
So I'll have to wait two weeks, and then I can come back and wall off.
Before the next council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Your complaints were received.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith? You are, oh, we're.
Do you want to make a comment?
Just a comment.
A public comment?
No, just a comment to add.
Okay.
I can tell you what the cost is of getting rid of two rats that found little tiny holes to get into our house. Few hundred dollars in six months of no sleep.
For some expensive rats.
And you've got to have a good dog.
Next on the public comment?
It's Mo.
Just Mo?
Just Mo.
Mo, Moan.
I'm a dirty wet Mo lady. I didn't dress up for y'all.
You're fine.
Apologize. Not really. I was too lazy to change. Excuse me. Y'all know me as Mo. I live 613 B Street. I actually had some other things to bring up, but I want to, I want to jump off of what Judy brought up. And it goes in line with one of the things that I'd like to talk about, is when I first moved to Vader, pert near five years ago, pert near, I'll round up. I was using other people's alleyways, and I didn't realize until my sister brought it to my attention, that's not very nice. And then when I now have an alleyway that a lot of people use, I go, hmm, okay, there's the other side of the coin. Well, unfortunately, the alleyway, the alleyway, unfortunately, because I live in it, I can tell you, it's not infested with rats. There are many reasons why. My house has rats under it also, and it's, some of it has to do with the many, many cars on not just B Street, the farms. We are in a rural community, folks. I'm sorry if that's a shock to anyone, and I apologize for my sarcasm, but it's the truth. The reality of it is, we've got mice, we've got rats. We have rats not just for reasons of garbage and the cats not keeping up, or even the chickens. It's everything. It's a factor of nature. And so if we really want to, if we really want to focus on one aspect of the nuisance of being a human out in the country, we can also talk about the barking dogs, the nitpicky neighbors, the foul words that come out instead of, hey, neighbor, can I help you with something? We could go on and on. We could nitpick each other to death, or we could come here and present a problem and say, I need some help. And that's what I'm here to do today. On B Street, it's mostly the people that live there too, and there's many here that aren't here. But people do not realize how fast they drive. They drive very fast down B Street on either side, and I know, we are not the only street that experiences it, as I see it. Some of the people. Some of the people that I love in this town, I watch drive really fast. So I encourage people, all of my neighbors, and as myself, to keep in mind, what if my kids lived on this street? What if my animals lived on this street? What if, what if? Hey, it's not gonna kill us to slow down just a tiny, tiny bit. So anyway, so there's my soapbox on the speeding. I really, I would love to be any assistance. I don't want to have to put in speed bumps, but I mean, if I could volunteer to do that, I would. I just, I hope for a little neighborly consideration when it comes to work. You know, we're all, we've all got our own stuff going on. And when we point fingers and go, shame on you, instead of going, hey, are you guys okay? Could I help you at all? I think that's a shame, and I think that we should be ashamed of ourselves instead of asking what someone's going through, making assumptions. So I encourage us all to be a little more neighborly and maybe a little more kind to each other, instead of getting brave behind a keyboard and saying things. I encourage us to maybe shine a little bit of love and understanding and slow down on my street, darn it. Or I'm gonna stand out there and wave, wave, wag my finger at all of you.
I don't make a note of that.
Oh. And please, this is absolutely just information, because there's absolutely no, I don't want drama from it. Caleb Young is no longer in town. The Facebook page that he's moderator of is going to be shut down. I believe all the Facebook pages, I don't know, I don't go on them, I just, I hear all of it, oh, it just makes me sick thinking about it. People get real brave behind those, so that's gonna be shut down. And if anyone's moderating one of those pages that doesn't live here, I don't think they should probably be running that either. So as a citizen, there's my two cents. So thank you, appreciate you listening.
We really need to get that three-minute timer thing.
Time me, I bet I was close to three minutes.
Four.
You were at four.
Close enough. I've never gone over it. Bet I'll be my one goal again.
Next?
No, we don't have anyone else signed up.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Elected official comments.
Well, I'll jump out there again. I really have an issue with the Jill thing and how that was all done behind closed doors and behind everybody's back. And I don't believe for a heartbeat that there was any emergency in that. I think it was all a done deal a long time before it ever got done. And I don't appreciate what you put in the newspaper about the good people of this community, because we dared to stand up and fight back. And you threw us all under the bus and caused even a larger rift in this community. So I think it was a pretty ugly thing to do.
I've actually received the opposite feedback.
Oh, I'm sure you have.
From some folks that came up to me after a council meeting.
Absolutely.
Actually liked what I wrote.
Of course I did.
Any other comments?
The people of this community didn't appreciate what you wrote.
I'll make a little comment. I just wanted to thank those of our community members that went up and volunteered for mayor and excited to see who ends up being our mayor. Thank you, Ken, so much for coming.
And Mr. Flynn as well.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Flynn is.
Has expressed interest in being mayor. So thank you, guys, for your, 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 letters are not, are staying in the packets.
Just because we didn't nominate you today doesn't mean we're not thinking about you.
Any other comments? From the council. Hearing none. Meeting closed at six thirty-seven P.M. Thank you all.